All right, good afternoon, everyone. This is April seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, work session for the Salisbury City Council. Thank you, we've got some students from Salisbury University here, thank you for coming. First up, we have Chief Duncan with an MOU for joint investigations for vulnerable adults. How are you doing, Chief?
So I'm here before you today to discuss a memorandum of agreement which has been presented to Salisbury Police Department for a signature. According to council protocol, any memorandum of understanding or agreement that I, that is presented to the police department needs to be presented to you for discussion. This particular one involves not only the Salisbury Police Department, but a number of law enforcement entities within our region. And the area aging, area agency on aging, and it involves reporting, investigation of neglect or serious misconduct against vulnerable adults. Any issues or questions? I believe Pete has already reviewed this and has made some changes to it.
Saw that.
I will bring those back to the MAC, see if they are willing to make those changes. However, this is not our MOU, and I believe that the changes were largely grammatical in nature.
He said it was just issues of consistency in wording.
Yeah.
But nothing substantive.
Nothing that would...
Nothing legally substantive.
Correct, correct.
Okay, yeah, I read through it and I'm comfortable with it, and I think this is a good thing. At least it will help coordinate information between everybody. I think this is a, I don't have any issues with it, anybody?
No, I don't either.
Looks fine. There was a closed parentheses missing on line eighteen.
That's true.
Did you hear that? Parenthesis, this is thoroughness in local government right here. It's amazing.
Can you pull it up?
It confused me.
So unless there are no issues or concerns, I'd like to, I don't know if I'm eligible, but I would like to request that it be either considered tonight or brought forward to council meeting.
We'll put it at the next latest session.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Holland. Denzel Only Road Annexation.
Mr. Jakubiac was supposed to be here to assist me in case you had any questions, but he's not here. I'm gonna try to stumble through this.
I thought you were...
That's right, I didn't want to come in. I know someone's gonna have a question, I probably won't be able to answer. Anyway, I brought this annexation to you back probably about November with the concept development plan, and council agreed new follower with it, and we got an annexation. What I brought back to you is an annexation agreement and an annexation, a plan for annexation. Mr. Jakubiac, he did a, an impact study which, once the property's developed, it'll have a revenue of approximately nine thousand dollars per year. It went to the board of the city county planning commission, which it was Zone R eight A, which would allow it to nine townhouse type apartments on the, on the property. It'll also be bordered with sidewalks in the front. You know, they'll also have to go to the planning commission, back to the planning commission for review of the architectural design, colors and so forth. That's why I moved forward here. In the annexation agreement, I mean, this property will also generate license and fees, landlord licensing fees, rental license fees, building permits, those other fees. Each unit, the owner agrees to pay a development assessment to the city of three thousand and ninety dollars per unit. That's, and that, and those fees there go back, go back into city funds to help reinvest into neighborhoods and workforce housing and so forth. And that's, that's pretty much it for this annexation. There's Mr. Parker, because Mr. Jakubiac didn't show up. I mean, that's pretty much the, that's the shell for this annexation. The owner's anxious to move forward with this. This will also close in, you know, creating property, these little pieces of property that are in the county, it could be bordering our city. And that's pretty much it for, you know, this annexation is pretty simple, one is less than an acre.
Nine units, and I counted thirty-three parking spots.
Yeah, yes.
That's why we get...
Amen.
Bill, none of my, none of, I can't see any on Councilman Rudisso's, and I'm not sure, is that a constellation? Is that a constellation? What is that for sure?
It looked like it was a dark, I mean, I'm looking at the site.
What do you got?
If you keep going...
I had the same thing.
Did you really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know what that was, but if you keep going...
You said a constellation.
Down to, what is it, attachment two?
Are you looking, is this what you're looking at?
Yeah, it just doesn't come through that clearly. It's Andromeda.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's the overhead side of the show.
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that didn't pronounce, that didn't scan very well for us.
So Bill, how do you, can you just back up a second? How do you get in here? Where are you going, down Hall Drive?
Down, down, down Only Road.
Okay.
And it's right next to, oh God, what's that development down there? Cedar Crossing.
Okay.
Cedar Crossing, and it's, all of that is multi, multi-family dwelling in that neighborhood.
So it'll be rental, it'll be college rental, right?
It, I, probably so. Yes, sure.
I just, if someone could check with the police department on some of the issues that they have down there with the way some of that stuff is set up. The quality, I'm not gonna tell you that the quality of any of that, especially in Cedar Crossing, is anything that I can be proud of at all. If there's any way that we could ask at the level of quality of what's built.
Materials.
There, I mean, you know, when you, I recognize nobody has, nobody has to have a store door if they don't want to, but when you come down and the set of steps is, you know, is right there, no handrails, it's just...
I understand.
So I don't know whether or not that's you, I don't know if that's Jack, I don't know if that's the planning commission.
Planning.
But if someone could find it within their hearts to check with Chief Duncan to see whether or not she has some suggestions as to a way that those things could be done so that the issues that are going to cop prop up there could be addressed in a more timely fashion, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, it's the university district, and that's where we put them. Right.
Pretty much.
So does everybody have consensus for this?
Yeah.
Yes.
What we'll do next, actually it'll come next Monday night to a regular council meeting. All that will be doing is just, you'll be setting the public hearing date for, I think it's May twenty-second.
Okay.
And as you saw in your, in your, your package, there's a copy of the advertisements in there that will be going in the paper advertising this annexation.
Yeah, we'll schedule that in the morning.
Sure.
All right, make sure it gets on the schedule. All right. Thank you, sir.
Oh, Mr. Jakubiac, we missed him.
I will, of course, in a minute.
No, he's not.
Susan, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, so Susan's not here yet. Mr. Mayor, I think everybody is, we have consensus on putting the corridor study plan on Monday night's agenda.
Okay.
What is the, I don't have any question about the nuts involved, but do you have any idea, like, where we will start or what the, what should we be looking for as we come out on the third tour and you go, aha?
We talked to staff about this today, and, and there were three things that I was gonna talk about tonight, and, and staff was gonna get into tonight. And we've talked about some of them. The why, you know, why, why do this? And the reality is that there are other parts of the city that have logical, consistent and orderly planning that's been done for them. And this is a district, the Route thirteen corridor, that has had illogical, disorderly planning done for it. Really, no planning whatsoever. And so the legal framework is disorderly, it's antiquated, it's not like, you know, other parts of the city, like to the east and west where you've got PDDs and we've said exactly what's expected, exactly what we want things to look like. You know, that doesn't exist on Route thirteen. And the proof of that is in the physical appearance. It is disorderly and less than attractive. So the next thing I was gonna bring up is the, the what, and the what next, because this is just a visioning exercise, that what is overlay zoning district that comes with design guidelines for each, each section of the corridor, each of the, I forget what they were calling it, but each of the neighborhood districts of the corridor, and then an actual overlay zoning characteristics. So both design guidelines and zoning characteristics that may include planning, or excuse me, may including density, floor area ratio, setback lines, all of the things that, you know, we've kind of talked about for years as we want to see in the Route thirteen corridor. And then the how, what I would suggest is that we, we actually in the next year, whether it's, and we, this really just came up in the last twenty-four hours or so, is kind of as a first step, is that we are probably ready to, from south to north, start to actually contract someone to start doing that work, which is gonna require some contract. Some of that we can do in-house, some of that's gonna require somebody with some vertical expertise, so an architect to actually assist in writing some of that.
So if, if in our minds, what it looks like in between the university and the other side of Route thirteen is basically, that's not exactly what it'll look like, but that'll be a big part of it, that middle part. If you are, you're the property, I know there's a, there's one parcel somewhere in between, like the old bike shop, I'm gonna say Horner Honda, that's how old I am, is that...
Oh, hey, can you use the microphone, she can't...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Will we take the new standards and put that on to new, we'll put it on to new construction?
All new construction.
All new. How will we, and what do you think the timeline is for, would it be a structure that changes hands?
Here's what I'm thinking, and, and this is ultimately, I think, something that's gotta be, council's gonna have to discuss in detail over the next, as we have proposals come forward. But, but I had a thought today, we have a standard that we apply to sidewalks and curb and gutter, and if you are not, if you are not renovating, doing a renovation of greater than twenty-five percent of the value of the assessed value of the property, you don't have to do those improvements.
Okay.
So I'd say, find something like that, maybe it's a hundred percent. So let's say it's a, a shopping center assessed at a million dollars. Say, if you're not putting a million dollars into the improvements of that, you know, if it's really just, you know, paint and signs and upgrading, then, you know, far be it for us to tell you, you have to build a new twenty million dollar building, you know, and major investment, now, which granted will obviously produce returns, but, but rather than say some low threshold, maybe the threshold is higher, and we say, you know, and I used hundred percent, maybe it's fifty percent, maybe it's seventy-five, and that's really something I think we can all discuss. But I think we should find something like that. An alternative is time, but I think rather than time and rather than ownership changing hands, I think it should have to do with redevelopment. So if the property's getting dilapidated over time, and we say, you know, and someone says, I'm ready to invest in a redevelopment of that property, that's the point in time that we should say, and here's the standards that you have to meet.
Right.
You wanna redevelop it, here's the standards you have to meet. And we have those standards in every corner of the city. This is just a more orderly standard for this section.
I was here talking to your planners.
All right.
I'm gonna plan things for a while, excuse me.
Have a great night.
You too.
See ya. So rather than say, you know, you have ten years or something, because you don't wanna force people to have to redevelop their property if they wouldn't plan to, you know, so do it at a time when they're already planning on doing a redevelopment. But use some minimum threshold, and we've got a precedent for that. But I'd suggest that at the time that we adopt any changes to our zoning code, that's when we should make a decision about those numbers.
So do you think it'll be easier to go up the middle of the road with the things that we're talking about in the middle of the road first?
Here's the thing, state highway's gonna do that on their time, they're not even gonna ask us. So that's, that's not up to us, we don't get to, I know, and I'm not trying to...
Are they planning to come north of College Avenue?
Oh, yeah, the median is planned all the way through to Zion Route.
Wow.
They've been acquiring property on either side, you know, strips of land, certain number of feet that they know they need, and it's happening. It's, they're replacing the bridge over the river in downtown. You know, they're in the process, but it's, as much as I'd love to make it all happen at once, I don't think we have that power. I think those are economic gestures that are far bigger than, you know, the city or...
How do, you'll need us to come up with something that says, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be able, so when I walk out of here, I know what I'm talking about. The old tire place in between Isabella Street and Elizabeth Street closes, somebody else buys it, they're going to go make improvements to it. They'll come into this building to talk with staff here, and staff will know that, that we have collectively decided that whatever the threshold is, they'll know what's expected of them to do on the property.
And, and I think at that point, if we update the zoning code for each of those districts, and, you know, it's a matter of staff will open the, the code book and say, oh, okay, all right, so in that zone, in that overlay, so just like for now, think about corridors like, update, you know, more modern areas of the city like, like northeast collector, Beagle Park. So, so, you know, there it's PDDs, so it's got tons of detail about what can happen, what it's gotta look like, you know, materials, everything. You know, this area, there's nothing, no standard, no, you know, specification, very low threshold. So I, I think one, they can look and see, okay, well, here are the standards you'd have to apply, and they can say that to the developer, the owner of the property. But I think they could also help them by saying, look, you want, are you talking about painting the building and putting a new sign face on and replacing the windows? Okay, then here's the standards. Are you talking about tearing that down, you wanna put Burger King up? Well, that's entirely different standards.
All right. Getting ready to say a word that Councilman Rudisso loves, and that's non-conforming use, and I only thought of it because Susan Phillips walked in the door.
I think that's two and a half words.
That's true, that's right.
There's a, yeah.
What keeps a property from coming in and saying, well, I've been here, like it happens in neighborhoods, I've been here...
Right.
And this is it. How are we going to keep most of the properties on Route thirteen not turning into a non-conforming use like we have?
Well, when we adopt it, they'll all become non-conforming, but they'll not be, they'll only be legal as long as they don't redevelop. And as soon as they redevelop, they have to follow our, the new zoning standards.
I mean, an example is where the thrift travel win was, well, now they've built some, probably some automotive center there.
Right.
But it's not, it, there's no standard, so they could put the building wherever they wanted on the property.
Unfortunately, we couldn't stop, we couldn't stop that.
So, but this is us...
It's not great.
Yeah, 'cause I don't, I don't really like where it's sitting.
No.
But, you know, this would have actually instilled...
Move them to the front, got the sidewalk.
Yeah, and some other standards with, with the building and everything, so...
And, and Jack Lennox has put this even, kind of put a finer point on this at times, and one of the things he said is, he said, one of the things that Councilman Irtan has asked for time and again is, how do we get the, you know, Cambridge Walmart not, you know, and I think one of, one of the responses is, or his response is, is if you do this, now you say, you gotta give us like the, the urban Walmart or the, you know, or the urban Target that, where there's, you know, probably some apartments above it, you end up with a totally different model and probably some new products.
One of those pictures that's in the, in the presentation. I mean, you can see the...
We ended up with the Target with the elevators and escalators.
Now you're talking. I like, I like those, actually.
That's, that's the target on La Brea in Hollywood, and she's talking about it.
No!
Now even Annapolis.
Yes!
Yeah, in Portland and Hollywood.
They have one in Annapolis, they have one in Florida, so I mean, yeah.
And that's really great, to be honest with you, when you're walking through a city like that, and instead of having to get in the car and go...
So College Park just went through this, and, you know, they're, so they're building different, it's different buildings. It'll, it looks totally like a different city than when I went to college there, but it, Route one in College Park was Route thirteen. I mean, it looked like Route thirteen fifteen years ago, and now it looks like, you know, you're in a downtown, old town, you know, area, like Old Town Alexandria more than it does.
Well, the corridor study keeps you from just throwing buildings up and just doing whatever you want to do and how they want to do it, so we give them some kind of structure.
There's more self-determination that we're saying, here's what we want as a community instead of anybody who comes says, I'm doing what I want, I don't care what your community looks like, I care about.
What sort of mix would it require for these ordinances to be not such a disincentive that people just decide not to redevelop? Because when we're looking at thirteen, it's a lot of buildings that already have a purpose today, that are generating capital today, there's a lot of redevelopment going on today. So we, we could put this in place, you know, and unlike College Park where there is just high competition for land use, you know, people are filling in that space. I'm not sure if we're there yet, you know, and...
There's two differentiations between us and, two things to point out between us and College Park. One, you know, we don't have a thirty-eight thousand person university, so I, I think they're always gonna have, and they sit just on the edge of a four million person metro area, but, so I think, you know, it's a good point that we're always gonna, we're not gonna be College Park exactly. However, even given their density of student population and where they sit, they still looked like us a decade ago. And now they look entirely different without even adding a bunch of people. Just housing them differently.
That's true of the District of Columbia, of Prince George's County, of Montgomery County, you know, you go to Silver Spring, Silver Spring is...
Transforming.
Completely different place than what it was when I was growing up.
But I will say, in the world of architects and, and developers, this usually incentivizes more action, not less. And part of that's because quality begets quality, and quality begets, you know, people being willing to part with their dollars a little bit, you know? I wanna go to that place, I wanna go to that place and spend time, and thus I wanna go to that place and spend money, 'cause it's, it's attractive. And it's, you know, it's somewhere I wanna, I wanna be, you know, and even if it's buying a, a dollar hamburger in a nicer looking McDonald's than in the, you know, the less attractive, more suburbanized McDonald's that you were in, the, the density of land use being higher and, and wanting to actually be there and spend time there will be, or could be better for our economy than what we have today with a more, you know, spread out, sprawled out, physical form. It, it, it has the potential to, on its face, in any community, look like it's gonna be more difficult to redevelop. However, we're talking about allowing more to happen with property, so the drivers of redevelopment, which are gonna be the people who own the property, not just the, the people who own it today, but the people who may own it in the future, or the people who own it today who are, have a willingness to upgrade their, their properties and redevelop those properties, the, the potential is for higher, you know, economic activity and higher density of economic activity.
So will our job to be, to split the difference between wanting the new standards and having the property not causing the disincentive, are we going to try and figure out, look and see what other places did about what the percentage of change in the property is before the new standards? 'Cause you don't wanna disincentivize it.
We don't wanna stop.
We don't wanna stop.
What's happening.
And we don't wanna have them, so how, and I'm, I wonder where the, I'd like to find out what other places did when pushback came on...
One, one thing we could do is write that in, in RFP for planning services when we, so writing code changes, you know, getting, you know, getting a planning and design firm to draft up some design guidelines and things like that. We could say, and with that, we wanna know what the threshold should be for change, so come up with some suggestions about what other places have done.
I would hope that at some point, some of the properties are, I wouldn't hope, I know that some of the properties are in such tough condition that if somebody wanted that frontage on Route thirteen, that it would behoove them like we did with the nineteen fifty-seven trailer that we had for years, it was finally time for it to go. It was, you know, it was finally time for two bathrooms, it was finally time for, you know?
And at the same time, you don't wanna cause someone who wants to paint their building or upgrade their sign to say, I have to do what? Right, yeah, and just let it fall into disrepair. So there's probably some middle ground there, and I'll bet other communities that...
I'm sure.
There's probably like a small, medium and large options, like if you do this, you need to do this, if you do this, you gotta do more.
Yeah.
If you do this, then you gotta do the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, you know, looking at the, the vision document that they showed, like the, the overall map that they showed, where there's some super blocks, you know, some very large buildings, not everything has to be like that either. I mean, you could have some really small buildings on small lots that, that just have a higher density, higher floor area ratio, and it may mean, you know, okay, it's got two apartments above, you know, it doesn't have to be ninety apartments and, and a development that only some big out-of-town developer can do, you know, it's just that when you build that little building on that little lot, we want it to look, we want it to contribute in a positive way to our highway corridor, our main corridor through the city.
You don't want it to be an eyesore.
We don't want it to be an eyesore.
Is there anything in, and I have, I'll be honest with you, I have not opened up the budget at all, I've been on page, is there anything in the budget that, that, remember when we, when we did the bike?
Yep.
We did the bike plan, we all agreed, this is not gonna sit on the shelf, we don't want this to sit on the shelf.
Right.
And anything that you needed to fund in there, is there anything here in this one?
Call, call it an oversight, but no, there's not.
That's all right.
But I think either at the council table or through budget amendment or through conversation within the next twelve months, I, you know, whether we find it, I, I think we should move it forward. And I think we're only talking about, you know, maybe twenty thousand dollars, we're not talking about a huge, long study process. I think these things can be drafted relatively quickly, and there's lots of examples out there. And so I, I shouldn't even throw out that number, I throw out, I throw out a number, but I don't think we're talking about a huge sum of money, this is more like a, but we will have to contract some planning services, we, you know, we just won't have...
And the only other question I have, and I know that I hounded Planning Director about this while he was here, and he didn't commit one way or the other, but when we take a look out on Beagle Park Drive, I know these standards that we're going to adopt don't, but is there any way to make it so that Beagle Park Drive, we don't have to come back, council's twenty-five years from now and say, we have a corridor study plan for Beagle Park Drive because we want...
It, it looks like thirteen.
Because it looks like thirteen. We don't want it to, we don't want it to end up looking like that, too.
Right.
In fact, what we should probably do, and we can ask planning staff to look at this, we should, we should probably do is say, take all of the PDD... take all of the PDD standards on Beagle and Park Drive and other corridors where there's kind of new development in the last ten years or so, and say, do they, do they all align? You know, how dramatically?
That's really fun.
How dramatically does it change from one to, and not that you want it all to look exactly the same, but some uniform materials and, and some uniform standards and setback lines, that is what gives you a sense of place and character.
Can we ask them to, to talk to us about that?
Yep.
Uh, that sounds like a really fun conversation with Keith and Jack.
Doesn't it?
Keith and who?
Keith and Jack.
Doesn't it?
It really does.
Doesn't that sound fun?
No, not for, not for any normal human being, it is, but yes, for me, that sounds like a whole lot of fun.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, Tim, we can do that.
All right, so we're good to put this on Monday night?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sounds good, we have to save this on that. All right, next up, we're gonna go back. Ms. Phillips is here. We were ahead of schedule, sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to discuss the tenants' rights lease addendum that is including the few sentences regarding the HVAC duct systems having the recirculation of air. So you'll see the sentence, um, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraphs down, and it's in bold. And it says, in the case of a multi-unit structure, the tenant acknowledges this structure does, and it's blank or does not blank, and we'll have the, um, tenant or owner check there whether it does or does not have a shared heating and cooling HVAC duct system. If it does, this means the air is recirculated in multiple units. That's basically just putting, making sure the tenant is aware whether or not the structure does or does not have a shared heating system, heating and cooling system. And this so, shall be available at any time for the housing official, just like the current tenants' rights lease addendum. So this will, this copy will replace the current one. And it was reviewed by Mark.
All right, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Does this, I, I wanna circle back around, does this as closely as we possibly could without saying you have to have, you know, apartments that are separate from, address Mr. Raines, at least in, in, as closely as we could, as far as we could go?
I, I think this is, because I think really it, it's letting the tenant know ahead of time, you know, that, hey,
It exists.
This is not, this is, this could be a problem if you have, you know, any type of breathing conditions or anything. Uh, I think then it gives them, you know, that opportunity to back out before they sign the lease.
Right, to not move in. And going forward, the new building and mechanical code, the structure not built that way.
Right. So it'll just be on the older?
Correct.
And I'm, I'm just wanna walk in from the beginning. I'm the tenant, I walk in, I wanna rent this particular house. There will be something in the tenant's bill of rights that, that everybody's got to sign that says that this is, this is the situation with the heating.
Yes, it is on, on the tenant's bill of rights, so they have to check if it is, if it does have it or does not have it.
And we're pretty sure most people are getting these?
Anytime we do a random inspection now, we check if the landlord, I'm sorry, if the tenant has one of these. And if they do not, and if the landlord cannot produce it, that's signed, the date that the lease was signed, we give them a five hundred dollar fine. So we are definitely enforcing that.
Just one thing, I, I did review this, but I've kind of had a change of heart on one thing.
Okay.
Where I, I like to be polite, and where it says, please check, I don't think we should word it that way. I would suggest that we say must be checked by landlord. Cuz that, we don't wanna leave anyone the option.
I'll make the change.
Yeah, that's the only suggestion.
Okay, I'll make the change.
So we have consensus on this? Any other questions? Everybody good?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We'll put this on for you now.
Okay, I'll have that changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. All right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So let's see, we have a signed fire services agreement.
Yes, um, so let's walk through it. Um, as you know, this has been a long process. Uh, this is, um, not the last piece of the process, but this is, um, uh, an, an important step in the process. I wanna thank, um, Councilman, former Mayor Irtin for, um, insisting for years that this situation be rectified. Um, and, you know, we've been working for, I don't know, twenty-four months since you, uh, asked Julia and myself and some others to, uh, join the county at the negotiating table. And, uh, we're finally there with an agreement. Um, it doesn't achieve everything that we want. It doesn't achieve everything that the county wants. It certainly doesn't achieve, um, everything that the, uh, former volunteer members of Station One have, uh, wanted. However, um, I think it's as close as we can get to a win-win-win, um, in that everybody gets some of what they want. So this agreement, uh, starts off by describing simply, um, uh, what, uh, we're providing, which is fire and emergency medical services outside of the city of Salisbury to a predetermined geographic area, um, known as the Salisbury Fire District. Um, this does not affect or does not concern the city of Salisbury in terms of fire services inside of the city of Salisbury. It only concerns the, the shape outside of the city of Salisbury. That's what the county is paying the city for. Um, essentially saying, will you provide City of Salisbury services to these areas in exchange for X number of dollars uh, to be calculated through, um, the following means, and we'll get into exactly how that works. So, um, this agreement, uh, agrees to provide those services to that area. Um, it says that we will use all of our resources, so our three stations and all of our assets. Um, as you know, we are unified command, we have one entity, not multiple entities. There's not a career fire department and a volunteer fire department. Our volunteer firefighters ride, uh, and in some cases, command, uh, while career staffer in other positions. They are interchangeable. Um, and they hold ranks that, uh, and wear uniforms that are non-differentiating. Um, there's no way to tell unless you know um, who's a volunteer and who's career firefighter. This, uh, document also defines the geographic area, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Also says that we'll continue to provide, uh, special operation services. Um, so that's hazmat, trench rescue, dive rescue, uh, boat rescue, and other types of special operation services, um, outside of the city of Salisbury in, uh, not only the Salisbury Fire District, but we'll provide those throughout La Conica County, cuz we have an advanced special operations team that they, um, that the rest of the county doesn't have. This, uh, talks about, uh, re- reimbursement for those services, and it sets a rate per call. And that rate per call is divided into three categories. Um, and the three categories are for a fire call. Um, a fire call will pay three hundred dollars per call. Um, a non-transport EMS, uh, as a basic life support or advanced life support will provide one hundred dollars per call. And, uh, a transport EMS, whether it be basic life support or advanced life support, will provide four hundred dollars per call less the percentage, um, e- estimated percentage, uh, received from insurance reimbursement. And when I say estimated, it's only estimated for year one. Uh, after this, it will be based upon the year prior, the calendar year prior. So, in year one, the estimate is that we'll collect sixty percent. Um, we don't ever collect that much. We collect about forty-five percent. Um, so, next year, uh, the percentage reimbursed to us by the county may be higher, is likely to be higher. Uh, however, the county has reserved the right through this agreement to say that if you're unsuccessful collecting those debts, city, once you've exhausted and said, we're done trying, may we try? And we said, absolutely, sure, go, you know, have at it. We don't believe that that will be successful because, you know, we've, we've got, you know, professionals that do this every day as well. Uh, we got firms on hand that work for us that do this work, and, um, you know, it's simply, you, you can't get money from someone or an entity that doesn't have it. So, um, you know, you're, you're not gonna be reimbursed beyond a certain point. Um, this also provides for, um, advanced operation services to be paid through a stipend that is a reducing stipend. Um, the idea, the reason that it's a reducing stipend is that the county wants to get to a fee-for-service model only. But we are able to bill. Uh, in other words, we bill for, you have a hazmat spill, you know, um, the, uh, Purdue plant or a truck on a highway or a plant in the industrial park has a hazmat spill, gasoline or something like that, we bill them for that. Um, just like we would bill for anything else, and then their insurance will protect them, their insurance will cover most of, of that above some, you know, deductible. So, uh, this agreement does not limit our ability to collect as we need to through our, uh, billing methods and in, uh, through our reimbursement methods, um, as, as currently required and as we currently follow. Uh, this creates an annual review, so every January, we'll look back and say for the calendar year previous, um, what has been the, uh, change in insurance collection rates, uh, and we'll set that new rate for the following year. Um, we'll also depend upon the EMS calls, or the, all of the calls, which will be collected by the County Department of Emergency Services, just as they are today. Um, now, we're able to verify those, and we verified those this year, and we saw no difference between our verified numbers and their numbers. So, you know, we trust their numbers, um, they are the same as we, as we find. Mutual aid calls, um, we won't receive reimbursement for mutual aid calls out of the city, and they won't receive reimbursement for mutual aid calls into the city um, in our mutual aid territories. Um, however, uh, um, regular billing still applies to the mutual aid calls. You can still bill someone. We just won't create an additional fee or anything like that to say, um, oh, you know, hey, we had to come to Fruitland or we had to come to Delmar, so we're charging you more. Uh, that's a practice that we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't do. Mutual aid agreements don't allow for that, um, and, uh, it's a practice we don't want others to begin taking up, so.
Essentially, if one of our EMS units picks up somebody in Delmar, we can bill their insurance.
Absolutely. Same as we would bill somebody in Salisbury, and, and they bill people in Salisbury, same as they would bill somebody in, in Delmar. We, we say that we won't reimburse for self-dispatch calls. Um, we don't self-dispatch, but there are incidents where, um, where self-dispatching occurs, and there are places where that occurs. Um, but even in cases like, uh, uh, let's say so, uh, a car accident happened immediately in front of Fire Station Sixteen, um, we don't self-dispatch that. You know, we go out and render aid immediately, and we call and let them know that it's happening, and the dispatch center says, you know, take care of it. Um, so we still use a dispatch, so it's still call logged, and it's still tracked as a, as a dispatch. Now, uh, they tell us what vehicle to use and all that, but, uh, again, if an accident happens right in front of the fire station, we'll go right out. Um, the length of the agreement is a five-year agreement, um, and, uh, we said that if any unforeseen material change happens to insurance coverage or payments, it causes us to be unable to render that service to those areas anymore or causes the county to not be able to afford to pay us anymore. And one example, um, that came up as a material change, cuz it's gotta be unforeseen and material, is if Medicare went away, or if Medicaid went away. And we just said, that simply no, no longer exists. County, you gotta pick all that up. Uh, that would be a material change. I don't anticipate that happening, but you never know these days, so we'll see. Other considerations, we basically won't treat the area any differently than we treat the city as far as providing, um, professional services and working with, and, and also we'll continue to work and provide consultation and use all of our expertise at the table when working with the county. Um, and this is the agreement in its entirety. Um, there's no, you know, side handshake or anything like that. Um, however, uh, there are, uh, there are some addendums, uh, and let's talk about those for a second. So, one, um, and I'll start with Appendix B, and then I'll work my way back to Appendix A. Appendix B, um, sets the reimbursement formula, um, and, and this just uses the numbers in the agreement to show what it would look like, uh, for a hundred calls. And as you know, we have thousands of, of calls outside of the city into the unincorporated areas of our fire district. Uh, back to Appendix A, however, um, Appendix A, um, is a series of maps, and the series of maps shows our fire response and our EMS response, um, areas. And, uh, this shows the current areas. So what we've adopted, actually, is, is the maps as it is. Um, but what we, what we have agreed to in principle with, uh, the county, what we will be willing to, to change. By the way, this agreement requires the city, the county, and the county fire chiefs, or in the future, some similar entity to, uh, to all agree to changes. So if we don't agree to a change in territory or something like that, we don't have to. Um, it requires our, our consent and our agreement to change it. Uh, but what we did agree to in principle, and it was on the screen that day, was, um, was a reduction of Fire Station One's territory, um, ex- exclusive of the, uh, or the city's territory and what normally Fire Station One responds to. We'll probably change those territories a little bit internally, um, in the city to make sure we maximize the response time, um, or, or minimize, reduce the response time. Pull it to the bypass, and, and the reason being is, um, it, I believe it is the county's plan to, uh, stand up a, a paid fire service at the airport to replace the paid fire service provided by Piedmont today. Uh, Piedmont Airlines will, instead of providing paid fire service, they'll be paying landing fees, so that will just switch the way that they pay the airport. Uh, the county will have to pick up, um, a paid fire service out there, a EMS service out there. Um, and my understanding from the county budget confer- uh, or budget, uh, hearing the other night is that they've done that, they've put that in their budget. And then, um, they will open a volunteer station there as well and offer that location to some of the members of the, uh, Fire Station One Corporation. As we've said, and as, uh, as we've been.
Are they only volunteering at the airport?
Uh, they, and the territory around the airport. That's, that's their proposal, um, but we would not be willing to reduce our territory any further, uh, west than the bypass. So about ten percent of the calls of that district are outside of the bypass, and about ninety percent inside of the bypass. The, um, I, I think a logic, you know, it's, it's also logical. I mean, we can also, we can make arguments about, hey, that's our, our territory, but, um, you know, I think it, it, A is logical, B gives, uh, the opportunity, uh, for the county to create this station and gives those volunteers who wanted to create their own entity to go do so, um, in somewhere else. And, uh, the, uh, let's see, um, in addition to that, um, uh, we would, uh, of course, insist, um, on, uh, retention of, and ownership of, um, the Salisbury name when it comes to fire departments of the, the number one, uh, as, you know, it is, it is auto-fire station and, you know, um, compelling the city to change its number is not something we're going to allow anyone to do. And, uh, um, let's see, what else? I think that's it. And so, uh, this would constitute the entirety of the agreement. Uh, we could update the maps, um, if we agree to adopt new maps. Uh, but otherwise, this would be the agreement that we would ask council to support and to support the revenue appropriation associated with it through the budget. Questions? Comments?
The media reports, I, merit would be easy to smile and go, thank goodness, the long ugliness is over, but it's not because we still don't have the pertinent information that the consultant said we needed from, uh, each of the volunteer fire companies in the county. Which means, we just agreed to something that we're hoping the data, I mean, I'm pretty sure the data's good, but it still doesn't tell us what people are spending. My question revolves around our three fire stations.
Yes.
The county executive says that he is putting an additional forty-five thousand dollars a year into the eleven volunteer companies. Those include ours.
No, there are fourteen volunteer companies.
Well, there, so, we were getting prior two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per station, correct?
No, um, we were getting about a hundred and thirty-five.
Okay.
Uh, per station, and there was an additional a hundred and twenty-five, but that never went to our budget, and it went directly to those corporations. We never saw that.
So, my question is, is, is this. These numbers work, we're gonna do the call for service, they'll get a bill, they'll send the check, we're gonna base it on numbers from last year, and then?
Well, instead of that, they'll just. Well, instead of that, they'll just pay us a lump sum-
Right.
-at the beginning of the year. But it'll be based on-
Based on the numbers from before. So my question is, is if, if each fire, if each volunteer fire station, when they buy a lot of things for each of those fire stations, if they aren't getting the money from the county, are the volunteer, the way I look at it is, we said 3.3, the consultant said maybe 1.5, it's 950. Again, I can smile, and I can walk out here and say, we made a difference. But if you're cutting back the amount of money that the county is giving to volunteers at the city corporations, that's also my tax dollars-
Mm-hmm.
-as, as, as a, as a county resident. My question is, are the volunteers going to come back and ask us to make up the difference for what the county isn't giving them? 135 times three is roughly, it's more than a third of that $950,000, because the county executive told the press, I'm only spending $100,000 more on, a couple, a little over $100,000 more on fire service than I did before. And I have, because I am one, when two politicians come out and say, we've won, some, something's, something, something's in the numbers. It, that fire service agreement is incredibly simple. It is well-written. It explains it. But it leaves some things out. And that is that the county is no longer going to be supporting the volunteer firefighters in the city limits of Salisbury. And my question is, are they going to come back and ask us to, because if they do, then one-third of this, one-third of what we thought we were, we were owed is, is, is troublesome.
Let me speak to my opinion on that. So we had an agreement drafted where there was a formula, and we also still had our special operation stipend and each of the stipends to the volunteer corporations included. And we felt, when we came to the table and said, okay, so we agree this, 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 we felt it was kind of a last-minute thing. We heard, yeah, no, scratch the special operation stipend, scratch the volunteer corporation's stipend. We're not paying that anymore. We're going to pay you a fee for service. And it upset Council President Heath, it upset myself, I know it upset Ms. Glanz, it upset Keith Corddry, Chief Hoppus. We were all angry. We were all very angry. And this was mu, you know, two months-
Because those dollars pay for vehicles. They pay for, I mean, there's a lot of things that those volunteers spend money on in each firehouse.
Right. However, yes, however, we insist upon, if you want to be recognized as a volunteer corporation with the City of Salisbury, we insist that even though we never see that money, we won't, you will use it the way we tell you to use it.
Right.
Now, we're receiving an amount of money directly.
Is it odd to anybody that volunteer corporations across the county that couldn't produce decent records are now going to get a $45,000 increase?
It's more than odd.
I, I'm-
I mean, it's frustrating, because how can you compare all the data from all the corporations? And, I mean, the only thing we have to go on is, is what 911 tells us. You know, other than that, you know, none of them have been audited, but I think some of that stuff is changing.
Okay. So I think Mr. Heath, Council President Heath indicated the other day with grants and things that were coming in, that they were starting to have to get their house in order.
Well, my understanding is that they're going to be required this year to have an independent audit of every single corporation. And that, that is what needs to happen and what needed to happen for a long time.
I'm going to ask an uncomfortable question. One of the issues that we had at Fire Station Number One was that the volunteers were not getting out of the station. 50% of the time, they weren't getting out of the station in the allotted time that we need them to do. And I know the chief is working to correct that, and that's initially what caused the riff, and that's, that's his job. He's the chief. If, if we are going, if, if we are asked to fund them, and I, I honestly, I don't, budget-wise, you know, if there was a huge, huge increase in the, in the property, in, in our, in our accessible base, and someone came and said, we, could we make up some of this money for our volunteers that was, that was, and let me say this clearly and plainly to anyone in the public, that was taken away from our volunteers by the county executive, because I don't think, I don't think the county executive wants anybody to realize that. We gave more money. Well, actually, you gave a heck of a lot less money, because you may have given $45,000 more, but you saved yourself $400,000 right there by taking it away, taking the money you were giving away to the city departments. I forgot what I was going to say. I just, if, if they came back and asked us for it-
I'll answer it this way, if I can, Jim. We've already anticipated, and, and look, I, I think the volunteer fire companies, we were independent, who have every right to, without us interfering, argue for what they want to argue for, and what they think they deserve, and what I think they deserve. And, and we can't stop them from doing that. We can't limit their rights to speak on their own behalves.
True.
That, that's up to them. And I'm, I'm okay with letting them do that. We have no recourse otherwise. However, in responding to what we think was an unfair solution in that aspect, there are a couple other things that we don't like. But, you know, at the same time, I guarantee you there are things that, that the county doesn't like about this agreement.
My, my thought was this, if 50% of them, if they're not out of there, is there any way to incentivize the other station? I don't know what the numbers are for the other two stations getting out. But if there's any way to move those numbers from 50 to 60, and then, and then we start putting, giving, you know, awarding money back into it, I mean, that is, I'd be all for, if we had it, certainly replenishing it immediately, though I'm pretty sure, you know, we're, we're going to start this process where we don't have everything that we want. But if there's, I don't know what the other numbers are for the other stations getting out of, out of the station on time.
Well, the fire chief has a presentation that he's-
Why, that he does?
That he's given before that shows a spectrum of, of what you do in America from, and you've probably seen it, from, from volunteer corporations to fully paid. And, you know, it goes the gamut from, you know, up to hybrid and, and on. And there's a couple steps in there. One of them is in-station staffing, which we've tried to offer to some people, and some of them have taken. There's another one called paid-on-call, where you actually say, I'm going to pay you to be there. I'm going to pay you to be there. Now, you, there's laws about how much we can pay them, because once we start paying them, you know, there's a threshold.
Are they employed?
I think it's 25% of their, of, of what a career person would make in that position. And let's not forget that many of them are career firefighters in other places, in other communities, and they volunteer here. Many of our volunteer firefighters are career firefighters elsewhere, and they simply volunteer and live here. So I think we could look into incentives like that. But I'll tell you right now, we, we put money into the budget set aside simply because, you know, we felt that they deserve it. And they do have real expenses, and they do have things that they have to spend money on. So I'm not trying to alleviate the county's responsibility, but, you know, we've, we've thought about it, planned for it, and, you know, if they don't come through, we're ready.
I was going to say something, but I probably shouldn't.
But it's in there. It's in the budget. It's in our-
For the next, the next discussion we're going to have, so.
You'll hold that one.
The, the tax differential.
Right. Ernie Coburn, who helped you all through the process, said in the newspaper that it is not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. In your mind, and God, God knows, we don't want to send a three to you, a two to you, and Chief, and Chief Hoppus back into it again, but-
Please don't.
If Ernie, if, if Ernie was sitting here, what would he say to us is imperfect, and where should we start looking? Obviously, there's going to be more calls. The population is, is, is going up, and-
We just got the 2016 census update, from 2010 to 2016. The part of La Comica County outside of the city of Salisbury and the rest of the eastern shore combined lost 238 people.
Okay.
City of Salisbury added 3,061 people in that same time.
Right.
So the entire eastern shore, except Salisbury, lost population. The city added up more than 3,000 people. So, Jim, you're, that, we're going to count more calls.
There's your base, there's your baseline for starting the negotiations again.
That's the story. This is where the people are going to be. This is where they're choosing to move. This is where they're choosing to live. We're going to, there are going to be more calls for service. And more of them are going to be in the city in the future. And nobody's going to pay us for that except for the person being billed in for our taxpayers. So, you know, a lot of the burden's going to be on our shoulders, you know, or the people sitting in our chairs in five years, or 10 years, or 15 years. But, but it's-
Well, then, I, I think you should put, I, I would suggest we do put on the agenda, and we do ask the delegate who has been a champion of tax differentials to come and meet with us, so that we can start laying out what our expectations are as he starts that process. So may we put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
That and be going apart draw the corridor standards.
Yeah, because we're now officially the last county in the, in the state-
In the world.
Yeah, in the world, that, that does not pay a tax differential. So, and I, and I think that's a fair argument. You know, this, this adds to it. Yeah, okay, we got part of this agreement done, but-
Because if they're losing population and we're gaining population, then we're paying-
Yep.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the greater than or less than is in that sentence, but with more people here and paying more for the outside, we're paying double-
Yes.
-for what the outside uses, and there are less people out there.
Yes.
Like that.
All right. So I, I mean, I know it's not, it's, like, like we said, it's not a perfect agreement, but do we have consensus to put this on Monday nights?
Yes.
Do, yes. Do we know for the public certification, the county council gets it tomorrow, what time?
I don't know. I don't know if it's their lunchtime meeting or their evening meeting.
Can I ask you-
Tomorrow's their first meeting, so I think it's an evening meeting.
It's an evening?
And I know it has been, Mr. Strausberg said it has been forwarded and put on their agenda.
Right. So you have three of the four entities saying, we're ready to move forward?
And, and I, while, let's remember, while we had our council involved, they didn't.
They didn't.
So I think there's probably some trepidation, some hesitation. However-
Their budget structure's very different from ours.
They're, yeah, everything, they're, everything they do is a little bit, you know, I mean, this, they've got an executive and a legislature. That's about the only similarity. It's, it's pretty different from us. But, but at the same time, I think the people, you know, having, having talked to them, having sat at the table with them once or twice about this very issue, you know, I, I think most of them are looking for a win-win solution that may have things that neither of us, you know, or, or may have things that each of us don't like, but we're willing to give up for the other.
So if I had to say, I, what I like about it is it looks like it's going to be $950,000 that comes, comes, yeah, somewhere around there.
For year one.
For year one.
But that could depend on the calls for service.
Yeah.
I think as calls for service and as our collection rates start to influence us, you're going to see an increase in that, you know. And I don't think it'll be dramatic. I don't think it'll hurt the county at all. But I think it'll be a, an area of growth. And, and that will push them, I think, in five years' time to have to ask the question, you know, can we afford to keep doing this? Or do we have to stand up our own? Do we think we can do it for less? You know, I, I think it'll push them to those questions. You know, I, I'm not opposed to only providing this service to our citizens inside the city limits. And I don't think most of you are opposed to that either. It's just a matter of who can provide it best. And, and right now, we know that for the people who live outside of the city but close, they need, they need this service. They need this service. Because at the end of the day, you know, if there's a child that's choking in 10 miles or from the city of Salisbury, and we can get there fastest, we're the ones who should go.
Yep. So we do, what do we do? Just a resolution to support it?
I think a resolution to support. Is that okay?
Is that, is that okay for Monday night, or?
We can pull that, we can pull that together.
Okay.
It'll just be almost like a cover sheet-
Yeah.
-approving the attached agreement.
Okay. Put it on. Any other-
I was just going to ask, we, when we approved the, the, uh, reduction in fees for new single-family houses, now that the mayor tells us we're 3,000 people to the plus, we were going to try and get some updates from Bill monthly, I think, as to how many people had gotten permits and where those permits were.
Okay.
I saw Sassafras Meadows.
Yeah. I know we, so we've had about, Sassafras plus, yeah. I think Sassafras was like 91, and then, and then there's Hunter's Crest, and there's another one. And then, we know that there's another one that's about 75 that's getting ready to come in. You got the monthly for March?
I don't know which section it's in.
We don't have to do that tonight. If you just want to, at, at the next work session, maybe just do a printout, give us an update.
Yeah, I can help.
Okay.
Probably not. You got anything, Harvey?
No.
All right. Nobody has anything else?
I'm sorry.
We're adjourned.
Thank you all.